Okay. Okay. I'm. Like to call the Parks and Natural Resources Committee, January eighteenth meeting, the order. I think our first item is the minutes from. September twentieth. As we canceled the November meeting. What?
I will accept the minutes.
Okay.
A second.
Second, okay. Anyone opposed to accepting the minutes as presented? Okay, I don't see any public here. So that brings us to old business. And I think it, I don't know, I don't think we have anything that was really outstanding from prior meetings, so some things that'll. Come into different staff reports and so forth that are still pending. So upcoming park programming, do you have anything on that, Jolene?
I do, so I just wanted to say hello to everyone, some of you I recognize from some things I've done in the past, but. Just wanted to say hi, introduce myself, I'm Jolene Woodmansey, I'm one of the planners in Jennifer's office. I'm just giving Jennifer the night off, so. Lots and lots of meetings in her role as director. And, you know, while still doing inland wetlands, so I just wanted to give her, give her a little bit of a break tonight. So, programming, we are all set for the spring. There has been a little bit of a shift over at Parks and Rec and. Catherine Carpenter is going to be reaching out to you all to discuss some ideas for some summer programming, so. That's going to be handled, my understanding is, a little bit more by Parks and Rec. Rather than from the Planning and Development Office, so. Expect to hear from Catherine in the near future, and if you have any ideas, fresh ideas about programming. You know, let us know and we'll, we'll pass it on.
Good, do you have an extension for Catherine?
I don't, Jim, on me, but.
I can look it up on the website.
Yeah, and I, I can get it to you by email tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll put it out to everybody.
Yeah.
And is that with a C or a K?
You know, Ken, I'm not sure, I have not met her yet.
Okay, I was thinking that I should introduce, so it sounds like she's new to the staff.
Yeah, I think.
She hasn't made a chili cook-off or any of the important things.
No.
Okay, because I was thinking I should probably introduce myself to her, and maybe.
Yeah.
Tom should, at least.
I'll, I'll let you know by email tomorrow where she is and, and her email and phone number.
Yeah.
All right, you want me to move on to the master plan?
I assume nobody has any questions or thoughts.
I just wanted to do our, a brief report on our, we had our, our tracking class. This past Sunday, and. There were four people signed up. And so we went in, of course, there was no snow to go tracking in, so we did my indoor program. And we had a lovely couple, we had so much fun. Because we had a lo- lovely couple that moved into the area from Turkey in September. And he had been a graduate student at UConn years ago. But he has brought his family back because he's going to be at UConn again. So we had a lovely, let's compare the animals in stores with the animals in Turkey and what their feet looked like. So we went through just about every animal that they could expect to see around here, and we talked about, well, yeah, there's. A porcupine there, but it's the African crested one, and. We, we went through the whole list of possible animals and what their feet looked like, and. It was just a lovely couple, they were supposed to bring their son, but they said he's sixteen, so he was still sleeping. But. Very small, but a really, we had such a good time with them, so.
I just thought on your tracking thing, you know, I oftentimes walk through the E.O. Smith Farrow Fields to get any place. And this time of year, their, their road or. Was supposed to be a walk there, is kind of relatively soft but shallow mud, so there are oftentimes tracks.
We, well, in the years that we've had snow, there's really been a lot of.
I, I fully realize that. But I was just thinking that, that that's a point where there are tracks that show up most of the time. As the deer like to graze there and.
Yeah, we, we could have, we could have done that, but they were.
There wasn't much out there.
Yeah, but we, but.
It was adequate, you know.
Yeah.
I see a fox, and once or twice I've seen fisher cat cut across there.
Oh, that's neat.
Yeah.
Well, we, we're also going to do a walk at. Mero on Trails Day, which is the first weekend in June. And I've got to talk to Jen about, we usually do a Mother's Day one. But there seems to be a conflict with that, but we'll have a couple of walks this spring.
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like we're supposed to talk to Kathleen Carpenter about that.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I haven't heard from her, but I've.
Yeah.
I've heard from some of the other crew over at the community center, so we'll get it straightened out.
Yeah. Is that, anything else on, so we go to the Parks Master, Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
All right.
Your cue, Julie.
All right, so, um, the master plan is underway. Um, they have, have a contract with a company called One Hundred and Ten Percent. Um, the community outreach will be getting very soon, we expect the first meeting sometime in February, so again, I think. You should expect to see some emails and some correspondence about these meetings that will be coming up. To, to get community input on, on the plan.
Yeah. So they're going to solicit community input and then formulate a master plan.
Correct.
And an action plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And.
See, that brings us.
I have on that, unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah. Have some thoughts, but I assume we'll talk, can talk to one hundred and ten percent plus.
Yeah.
On things that are needed, okay, so that brings us to the calendar that Jennifer sent out just before noon. Every, our actual calendar as opposed to the. Agriculture, was Agriculture Committee that snuck into our. Peace, which meets a different day. I don't know how many people have had a chance to look at it.
Just now I compared it.
With what you thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I think we have to formally accept it. Jennifer tells me it's already been filed with the town clerk's office, so, you know.
Well, it says right on the agenda, move to adopt the twenty twenty-three calendar as presented, ISO rules.
Okay. A second.
A second.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
All right.
This is to. One of our major topics, moss sanctuary access.
Yeah, so, um. I don't know how many of you know this, but I walk the moss sanctuary almost every day at lunch.
Are you the person responsible for having the, the plastic blazes up?
No, that's not me, I just use it to clear my mind and. Walk around during my lunch hour, get a little bit of fresh air. Last week, when I headed over there, the stairs going down through the Mansfield Apartments. Were actively being torn out, so. I think while we still have access currently, it's, it's going to be pretty quick, so that, that we're going to lose this, this side of access. So, couple of things, we need to work on some signage, I think, for the trail. And we need to work on, you know, some webpage updates, letting people know, maybe, maybe a Facebook post. On the town's website, letting people know that access really is going to be through Birchwood Heights.
Yeah.
You're still going to have access to, to the area, but it's going to be through, through Birchwood Heights for a while, so. Anything else you guys can think of that would help to sort of let people know?
Giving a map of the location where the access is coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. As an image on the posts or whatever notifications.
I was thinking the, the, the map that's on the website should be revised. And we probably should get something on, what, Connecticut Trail Finder?
Okay.
That's going to. This is a sign that's by the current entrance that should go over on the Birchwood. But we desperately need, will need more parking there, there's only room for about two cars.
Yeah.
But people can park, but people can park on Birchwood.
People park on the side of the road.
Yeah.
It's, it's a dead end road.
Yeah.
I, I don't think.
Very, very, you know, but, you know, it's one of those things that. And that section of trail going in there, as you probably know, Jolene, I don't know whether you've walked out to Birchwood.
I have, yeah.
There's a major wet area.
Right, where, where it kind of connects to the dead end road to the cul-de-sac there is not ideal.
Yeah.
So, and it's, it's a little bit hard to find, to be honest with you, so. Maybe I can work with Public Works to, to make that, the trail entrance a little bit more prominent there for people.
Well, the other, okay, the other thing is, our deed obligates UConn to provide access.
Right.
So they probably should be the ones working on that wet area.
Okay.
You know.
And the parking.
Yeah.
We could try.
You're talking about the wet area that's in a little bit from the access point at the end of the road, right, you walk a bit in, there's a. I mean, I think in the spring it was so vernally flooded that it was basically impassable.
Yeah.
Oh, are you, oh, I know, are you talking about midway on Birchwood Heights, because?
No.
Are you talking at, at the end, because you can enter Birchwood, you can enter in three locations, I think, on Birchwood Heights, correct?
But I'm not sure that all of them are actually official or not.
Two of them are.
Midpoint one is not official, it's, it's a trail of use, but it's not, it's not got a license or anything.
Okay, so that's the one by the pump station or whatever that, okay. So we do have the entrance right at the start of Birchwood Heights that goes in.
Yeah, that's the one we're talking about.
Oh, okay, so I'm a little, I'm a little bit more familiar with the one at the end of Birchwood Heights, so. And when you get to the dead end and you kind of go in, in there. Um.
Yeah.
That's the one that's not all that clearly marked.
Both of them need better signage to be able to identify as a pro, as a primary trailhead. And the other thing is, is I think that the signage that directs people to the alternate accesses. Needs to emphasize that, that it really, you can't really walk there from the corner of South Eagleville and one ninety-five.
Yeah, so the, the sidewalk does end prior to, to Birchwood Heights, I believe.
Yeah, it ends at the bank.
Yeah. Um.
And that section of one ninety-five has no, no shoulder.
Right, right.
I would classify as, I assume Miranda will nod, a very scary place to walk.
I've, from what I've seen, yes, I haven't actually walked that stretch, but yeah.
Rational individual.
Yeah, so, so I guess, you know, we're gonna, takeaways are, we're gonna, we gotta get some signage up or work with UConn. We gotta, we gotta get a map on the website, update the trail finder, Connecticut Trail Finders. Maybe do any, a Facebook blast and see if we can just let people know you can still access it, it's just, you gotta, you gotta get it from a different place.
From a different spot, and the.
It's very important to get the. The major rules for the sanctuary at these other locations posted, to try to discourage the bikes.
Okay.
Especially if those bikes go through that wet area, it's just going to tear that trail right up.
Yeah.
All right.
The big thing is to, is to, is to make sure that we get possession of the sign that's in the area that UConn is tearing up.
Yeah, I believe that is already in possession of Public Works.
That's right, yes, I had asked, I had asked Jennifer.
Yeah.
To ask Public Works.
Yeah.
To remove that sign before they put the fence up.
Yeah.
And.
We all did.
And so, I mean, I think that has happened, so that sign is sitting in, in the Public Works garage at this point.
So we should.
And I think we should put that sign on one ninety-five at the corner of Birchwood Heights Road. It will be visible, people going by, they'll know that's where the entrance is.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people who don't even know about Moss Sanctuary, because they've never been behind the apartments to see the sign that was there.
Yeah.
So I think it would help a lot to put that sign on one ninety-five, so it's quite visible.
Yeah.
And then, any regulations can go at the parking area.
Yeah, or, or should start on the, the, with the one question I would have is, how close to one ninety-five can we get without needing a permit from state highway?
Yeah, so I'll have to work with Derek Delai, the Assistant Town Engineer. About the state's right of way there, and we would have to be really careful now. If my memory serves me correctly, we have a sign at that one ninety-five entrance to the trail, I, I believe there is a sign there.
There's none visible. There's a couple of, of property marker signs.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's all there is, is just property markers and a, and a hiking only.
Okay, all right.
Okay, no, this is a topic for another time, but there are a couple of really small connections that could be made between the roads back there. The trail wise, that are connected by public land, by town land, that would make Moss Sanctuary more used by the whole Davis Road area back there.
Yeah, that little connection.
There's one area, and I, I know because I live right near it, where, oh my gosh, if there was a trail, it's got to be less than a hundred feet. And it's town land, and having just a footpath would make that accessible to this whole other branch of Davis Road, Felon Road and everything, and. I mean, it took me, I had to be here like four years before I realized that Moss Sanctuary was within walking distance of my house, but I had to cut through woods to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another topic, but I don't know how that happens, I would love to be involved in getting that.
Well, you're, you're on the committee that decides this, so decide where the trail should be.
Oh, I know where it should be, I've walked.
Well, the, the, the other thing that does is that connection, and then the connection between Monticello and. Felon moves your whole neighborhood in walking distance of campus.
Yes, yes.
I know.
Life so nice.
Madison Day and family in Moss Sanctuary a couple of times, walking to the dairy bar.
Yeah, it's, there's a great connection between, between Monticello and Birchwood Heights.
Yeah.
The connection to Monticello and Felon technically does not exist. There is a trail back there, but there is this one, one hundred foot or less. Area of forest that I believe belongs to the town, according to the maps, is open space.
Yeah.
And doesn't have a path, it would be, and it's flat, it would be so easy to make a path, I know making trails is never easy, I've done a ton of it, but it would be relatively easy.
Yeah.
Well, well, having this come up, one of the other things that I think the town should address is. Getting a, a license to, for the trail, that's common use trail that starts by the pump station.
Yeah.
And connects up with the, the outer loop around the pond. Because it's used, and it's right across the street practically from that trail that leads to Monticello.
Absolutely.
We should seek a, a license for that short segment. Crossing, and it doesn't appear to be Water Company land, that appears, that it might be just. The adjacent landowner, I can't see a small lot on the town map that says it's Water Company.
Yeah, there, yeah, that's what, I was looking at that, because I've been curious about that section, and it looks like. That is an extension that, that forty-four is a double lot. And that Water Company actually only owns a twenty square foot for their well.
Yeah. I think I have a bit of an idea how that trail was be, was created, I might know some of the people who were involved in that, and kind of getting an okay from the.
Yeah.
From people involved, but I'd have to ask them.
Yeah, well, it's basically a, a well-used herd path.
Yes, it is, but it's, it's the ideal location to make that connection to the neighborhood that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But it, it would be worth pursuing a, the town pursuing a trail license.
Yeah.
Yeah. That sounds like you're in an ideal place, Miranda, to follow up on that stuff.
I would love to figure, I would need pointers in terms of how to do it, I don't know what I'm doing.
Okay.
I would like, I would like to make a suggestion, it seems to me there are several places here that we are either proposing or considering. And I think talking about this on site would be productive, so I would like to suggest a field trip. To look at the corner of Birchwood and one ninety-five, talk about the sign, talk about the wet area, can we do anything about it? And also the connection that Miranda's talking about, and this midpoint trail by the pump station. To me, there are at least three things here that we could be looking at on the ground and be making some good decisions.
And I would love to be there for one of these, the timing of checking these, the past few field trips out for this has been terrible for me with teaching. So I've been unable to make them.
Okay, well, there's, okay, well, since you'd be our lead on the field trip.
Mm-hmm.
I walk around the pond, because I'm down on Hank's Hill, but that section along Birchwood I sort of know.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Yeah, so I'm less familiar with the sanctuary be, in, interior, because I only just started exploring it, because it took me that long to make the fifty-foot connection between my road. To get over to Monticello Trail System.
Yeah.
But I can show you where that is and where it needs to go, absolutely.
Do you want to look at your calendar and figure out when it'd be a good time to do a field trip at some point in their future?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Would a Saturday morning work for you?
Weekends are great, Fridays are great, um, in the afternoon, Mondays I can usually make work as well, it's these Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday timings in the afternoon that I just can't do.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, maybe what we'll do is we'll have Sandy put out a, a quick poll with some dates, to kind of get the conversation going and to get that scheduled. And, and see what works best for the most people.
Yeah, if, if you don't recognize Sandy's name, she's the administrator that makes the planning department work.
Yeah, right, we couldn't do it without her. All right, so we have a lot to do on that.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have anything for parks updates unless, unless you guys do.
The sign, this park sign for Shelter Falls Park is missing.
Okay.
Some friends wanted to go there, they had a hard time finding it because the sign was gone.
Yeah, that may be a case of exploring around and see, because I. That location, I can't anticipate somebody just taking it to cut down on traffic.
Well, I'm thinking probably college students taking, that would be my guess.
Yeah.
Have to put, start putting tags on the signs.
Do we have any updates, seeking of parks, any updates on the James property?
I do, I do have an update on that, so.
Would you prefer now or when we're in executive session?
Uh, yeah, probably would, yeah, probably when we're in executive session would be better.
Although it has been mentioned publicly.
Yeah.
Okay, so that brings us to an executive session. So we need a motion to enter executive session, and I'd recommend we put a reminder in the motion to pause. The recording.
One move that we pause recording and go into executive session.
Second.
Somebody.
Who seconded?
Yeah, anyone opposed, say, my clock says seven twenty-eight.
All right, I'm going to pause the recording unless anybody objects.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. We've returned from the executive session with no motions to take.
All right, so, a, a report from staff, little, a little bit, just a short report on our staffing. We did conduct the first round of interviews today for the new environmental planner position. Um, the second rounds will occur hopefully in the very near future, and we hope to have a replacement for Jennifer very soon.
She says it was great relief.
It's been a long time coming, and we are starting to feel the, the pressure of being down a, a staff.
Yeah.
And, you know, for, June will be a year, so.
So you said some of the, you said some of the. Program oper, coordination for. Is going to be shifted over from the planning office over to Parks and Rec?
Yes, yeah, that, there isn't going to be quite so much of the programming involved in that position.
Yeah.
But.
I think that was a legacy of Jennifer's movement to the planning office.
Yeah.
Yeah, she could, she didn't, she didn't get rid of a, a lot of stuff.
Right, and it was a shared position, if you recall.
Yeah.
This will be a dedicated environmental planner position.
Yeah. So the, when you say environmental planner, that means they can be involved in, like Jennifer was, in all the planning processes. Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I would, yes, and in the upcoming. Yeah.
Three professionals.
Right, and you know, when we write the P O C D, you know, we'll have to start that process in the next year, they would be heavily involved in that. Lots of, you, you know, lots of big developments coming in, in the next six months, so lots of inland wetlands. Lots of inland wetlands activities happening.
So.
It sounds like a good, good place for somebody to add on, but hopefully they like working with you and Ryan. And hang around like most people in this town do.
Yeah, we hope so.
Right, um I have a question about. How this committee is going to relate to the planning department? Uh will we now be staffed by the environmental planner?
I believe that is the case. I I don't think you move from from here.
Yeah.
Okay, that.
Right, and.
Be a function of this office.
All right. If.
Because the natural resources component of. You know, for the committee is really the big one. You know, when you come down to it.
So the rest of my question is. We're doing really three things at this point. We are planning for parks. Which I'm assuming stays in this office because it's planning.
Yeah.
We also are working on potential acquisitions, which I assume would be with plan.
Yes.
We also are responsible for the condition of the parks, the maintenance of the parks, like a missing sign, et cetera. Will that still be through this office or is that going to be through Parks and Rec now?
So. I I believe it's going to stay here, but I I would need to check to be a hundred percent sure. I know for sure because I was on the panel today and I asked every single candidate about their experience with acquis- land acquisition and open space. So that stays with us. Absolutely. I don't expect park anything from the. For the parks day-to-day operations to be moving. The only thing I've heard of that. Um and it's more of a function, really, the programming. It's different software that they use next door. Um it it's a it's that is probably better over there just because of the logistics of the whole thing. Um but that's the only thing that I've heard of that that's moving.
All right, so if there's a problem with the trail, for example.
Yeah.
And public work needs to go out and do whatever, cut a tree, whatever.
Yeah.
We would still be contacting the planning office and I assume the environmental planner, right?
Yeah, what I'm thinking we probably should think about doing is signing up with the um. What the citizen notify from Public Works, but somehow have our accounts designated that we're part of the Parks and Natural Resources Committee. As opposed to, you know, the person complaining about a pothole.
Yeah, that that's.
That's a question for John, John Cunningham, I would think.
Yeah. Yep, so any member of the public can put in a work order request for those types of items. Um if if that's something that you want to do, it just.
Yeah, I should probably explore how to do that and then figure out how to let them know that now where the request is coming from.
Well, I think we need to talk to Public Works about that.
Yeah, my didn't.
They do they want to hear from us or would they prefer to hear from someone in the planning office? I think that's their decision in the planning office.
I agree with you on that, but you know, to record, how to record things.
Yeah, so we.
The the more.
Would not be notified. Um it just the the. The system doesn't work that way where we would be notified if you guys put in a request, so it would be any way for us to track it.
Yeah.
Um I'm sure we could come up with a system to do that, but it wouldn't be an automatic thing that if you sent your own request. Um about a sign or a tree blocking the trail or whatever, um you know, we we wouldn't be notified that that was happening.
Well, I would think that there is got to be some coordination between who's going to do the work and who controls the budget to pay for it.
Yeah.
And I think that's where that's where it needs to be ironed out and that will per- perhaps define. The uh the communication pathway and especially if we get to a point where we don't have resources to accomplish everything we'd like. Uh somebody probably in the planning office needs to prioritize.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Well, Jennifer's we're working on our budget, so if you have any requests, let her know. It's that time of year.
Yeah. Does um any of the members have anything to share? Um Sue and Tom already shared about their tracking session.
I have a couple of things to share. One is I'm going to start with the things that aren't so great and I'll end up with something really great. Uh first is about the development in Four Corners. Um I don't know if you all are aware of what's happening there uh with the opportunity zoning. Uh there's a wonderful tax break for building there and that has attracted developers like flies to honey. And currently, there are six apartment developments being proposed for the Four Corners area. This is a lot of people that are going to be there living in apartments. The opportunities for open space recreation for folks in that area is really minimal. And uh I to me, this is a concern that there really is not a park for them. The closest park is Heap, which is on the well on the south side of forty-four. Uh the other issue is, and we have dealt with some of the multifamily uh proposals about this. Is what is happening with the actual property uh that's being developed. One of the proposals is on the north side of nine one ninety-five across from uh Holiday Mall essentially. Yeah, and um there's a there's Timber Drive, Holiday Mall, malls across three, and then there's a narrow sliver of land. Just to the west of Timber Drive between that and there's sort of a commercial building and then there is the White Cedar Swamp.
Which it which it which the park closest to um one ninety-five, the edge of that area is town. Town-owned open space, but not the critical back part of the swamp.
The um this proposal by BPOZ, that's the name of the company, covers a twenty-two acres. It's very narrow in the front. Goes back and includes a good part of the cedar swamp. They are coming in for a zone change at this point and I have talked with Jennifer about this. Having gone back there myself years ago, um it really was the only place I know of in town. Where the white cedars are in fact reseeding and regenerating. Most of the cedar swamps are so shady that the seedlings don't ever have a chance to grow. So this is potentially an important natural area. It is the White Cedar Swamp there has been a priority for protection since nineteen sixty-six. And no one's really done it many favors because they built one ninety-five across the middle of it and changed the drainage. And drowned quite a few of the white cedars that were in the upper part of the swamp. So this is an opportunity to perhaps protect that area. Um the proposal, from what I could see of the plans, was that it was simply going to be wetlands. They were proposing a buffer area. Um but I think the committee needs to take a look at this, A, see if the cedars are still there. And B, perhaps make a recommendation for more protection than simply having it be owned by this company. With no conservation easement or any possible way of protecting it. Um it is adjacent to what the town owns of the cedar swamp, which is a very small portion. Um and I just think we should take a look at it. Uh to me, the logical time and the easiest time to visit this would be when the Conservation Commission goes out for the inland wetlands application. And we could just roll both into one field trip and make it easier. Um so that's what I am suggesting is that we have a field trip. When the uh inland wetlands agency goes out to take a look with the Conservation Commission. Does that sound possible to me?
Uh yep, so it would need to be like a triple notice joint joint meeting between. Yes, yeah, um so you know. We did have the public hearing on the zone change uh Monday evening last last night, I think, no Tuesday, Tuesday evening, sorry. Uh we had a lot of neighbors come and um speak out about the application. Um. That was just the zone change, so depending on what happens with that. Um be paused, the owner, they'll go back to their engineers and their drawing board and all of that. And at some point, they'll have to come to us with a with a wetlands application, but I I don't know when that will be. Um so we'll have to just remember, you know, we'll have to just. Try to not forget that you guys want to be on that agenda, but yes, that that's something we can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What else is happening? Um some of you know I have been working on an account of the Open Space Preservation Project over the last thirty years and actually going. Beyond that even into the past and I'm almost done, which I'm really happy to report. And um I the next part of this project. Is to go through the five boxes of open space files in the town clerk's office. And try to make some sense out of those. Um basically, they are files that Greg Paddock, the previous planner. Uh had and they essentially were just thrown into boxes when he retired and put in the vault.
Yeah.
So so that's the next project and Jim is helping me with this because he's been on the committee longer than I have and remembers. I don't know.
Yeah, wha- wha- what Greg did was he kept everything in a file folder. And then the file folders I were are stored in and in a labeled boxes in the town clerk's vault. And one of the things to try to go through for the town clerk is there's some things in there. Like printed copies of deeds and maps that should be filed out that. That if procedures were followed are filed in the vault in a more indexed met system. You know, that like the the deed that he had a printed copy of came out of land records. But there's a lot of stuff we'll have to confirm that, yes, indeed, these are duplicates.
Vicky.
Yeah.
Um I've been on the committee for a while.
Yeah.
And uh. As a being a pack rat, I happen to have. Most of the stuff that I have acquired over the years is in a pile. I'd be happy to put it all in a box and ship it out.
Uh oh. Another box of papers to go through.
I've already done that to um. That to Vicky because.
I know.
I I have in my attic a lot of notes from Byron James, who was the first chair of this committee.
And I've already gone through three boxes of Byron's notes.
Yes. Vicky's timing was real good. We were having our attic insulated, so it meant everything decayed, had to come out of our attic for them to work.
Anyway, but anyway.
Outside storage for some stuff.
Right, and I have boxes in my basement and I have gone through. And the ultimate reward for this project is that I get to throw out those boxes. That's that's my reward. But seriously, Ken, um I certainly would be happy to take a look at what you have because I'm sure you have things the rest of us don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I you know, it's I tend to uh take notes on the agenda. So I have a lot of agendas from past meetings that have scribbles on them.
Yeah.
And some of it doesn't discriminate between um executive session and others in the notes I take. But um uh. If there are missing agendas, there might be a copy in one of my files.
I think there are some missing agendas. I went through all the open space minutes in the vault and there are some missing meeting notes. So so I do want to see your 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 box, Ken.
Okay, well, I'll try to pull it together into a box and get it out of my house.
See.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look. I know on the town website, there are a couple of of missing minutes.
Right.
Um I worked with Jennifer when that first went online. But there was a couple of gaps.
So you may be able to help us out, Ken, with the with the missing, the missing. Okay, uh last item, great news. Some of you who have been on the committee for a long time uh know that Lee and Donna Dunbar, who have about two hundred acres on Wormwood Hill Road. Uh if you're familiar with Hanson's Pond, which is south of Mulberry Road. On Wormwood Hill Road, that that is part of their property. And they also have most of the ridge behind their house to the east. It uh is adjacent to the Simpson Wood Park Reserve that the town owns. They have been attempting to conserve their land for at least ten years. I think they we talked to them like ten years ago.
Lee Dunbar, last I knew, was president of the Wolf Den Land Trust.
Right. So anyway, they have succeeded. This is wonderful news. And uh they have tried so hard and they have finally made it. Um some of you may remember that the last Green Valley was offering grants to purchase conservation. Uh development rights to properties along with agreement to have a forest management. And this was funding from the USDA through the Natural Resource Conservation Service. And they have received funding from that to buy the development rights to their property. So congratulations to them. This is wonderful news. It is another piece in trying to protect that ridge, the Mount Hope Ridge. Another project that hasn't been going so well is the Forest Legacy Project, which is also USDA, but is run through the Forest Service. Um there have been successful applications. For example, there was one in Chaplain uh years ago that went through that. And this is really a lot bigger scale operation. I mean, they like things that are a thousand acres. They can be a a collection of landowners, but it they they want a lot of land to show for the effort. Anyway, other landowners along this ridge have applied for forest legacy. They did it last year. They did not score high enough, so they did not get the funding. However, they have applied again and they are hoping that they will be successful this time. So things go on, the federal dollars get spent, we get protected land. It works, but it takes a lot of years and a lot of pre- pre-patience to make this happen.
Uh I got a question for you. Did Lee uh Lee has several parcels?
They're they're all except for pasture and the home. Everything is.
Okay, so he did both the uh the Little River Development LLC and his own. The stuff that he inherited from uh that that Donna inherited.
Yes, correct. Correct, and there, and the reason that I know about this is because I was driving down Wormwood Hill Road on the way to the dump. And I saw these signs on their property and I said, what are these signs? So I actually got out of the car and looked and it was right there, Conservation Easement, N R C S. So I called Bill Reed at uh Last Green Valley because he has been helping. Lee and Donna with this, with their conservation efforts and he said. They didn't, they put up the signs, they didn't even tell me they were putting up the signs, I should have a picture of me putting up one of these. Cause he has been so helpful to them, so uh that's one reason why we didn't know about it. Because he would have called us if he had known, but you didn't know.
Yeah, I did some searching and through the um. Record hub and couldn't find any notation in the town clerk's office, but I think that. There's a long filing lag on that, I know a couple of things I've had filed. In the recent past, took a long time to get actually filed. Carried around the receipt, put, put away in our records, a receipt for documents from the town clerk. But they're so low, like everybody else in the town staff, they're overworked.
Does that? Change how the committee would view the two parcels that are north of the Simpson parcel?
Well, I think. We're not in executive session, so I don't really know if we can talk about that.
But I, it's just something to think about for the future.
Anyway, that's it, I wanted to end on a happy note.
Yeah, the, that one parcel is uh, is the back of butter. And there's a couple of the Native American artifacts on Simpson Wood that I'm not quite sure where they fall in the property line.
I think, I think we determined that the turtle was on Simpson Wood property, but very close to the boundary.
And that was, that was, that was only using handheld GPSs as opposed to a surveyor.
But there were some, there were some uh uh property boundary markers.
Yeah, so, yeah. So do we have anything else then? Uh anything for a future meeting?
I just wanted to just make, make a note for the record of the two communications. Um you do have one from with regard to the Agbiotics project. And then the Connecticut Record of Decision that you have for Mansfield Apartments. Um if you look through it, I think it's page six that talks about our comments, it's a very long document. Um the process from here went to O P M and O P M uh decided whether or not. The project met the statutory requirements and that decision came yesterday that yes, it did. So, yeah. So now they'll, they'll go to deep for their wetlands license, um we don't have any jurisdiction there. Um and then, but we will have some room to comment um from the Traffic Authority, from O S T A. So we, we still have a chance to uh be heard on that.
The case may be.
Started, they've started work on the demolition phase already.
Yeah, so the buildings, um they, they've been working on the, the asbestos and lead abatement for a couple weeks now. Um everything's out, the windows are out, the doors are out, um like I told, like I said before, the stairs are gone. Um so probably won't be long before they come now.
And on the other one, uh I would, where that's actually been to court once, I would want a ruling from the town attorney before we even mention it. Other than by citation.
Sorry, which one?
Um the Agbiotics. You know.
Yeah, yeah.
That's been the, you know.
Yep, that's a communication, the. Uh the, the appeal was heard by the Connecticut Superior Court. Um and this is a further communication after that.
This is, this is only here because a resident asked it to be shared with us.
That's an interesting grandmother discussion.
Yeah, okay, so if we don't have anything else, we can accept the motion to adjourn.
I moved that we adjourn.
Second. Anyone opposed? Seeing no one, we can stop the recording.